Donna, you want to run another? Can I start?
No, go ahead.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'm Scott Lambert, and I'd like to call and order our first East Whiteland Township Supervisor Meeting of 2025. Can we stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Thank you. I'd like to introduce members here at the table. On my immediate right is Steve Brown, our manager, Vice Chairman of Supervisors, Richard Ewell, Peter Fixler, Supervisor, and then in the lower bar, Bernadette Kearney, staying away from me not to catch my cold, our Solicitor. Our executive sessions were held on January 6, 2025, at 4:30, and on January 21, 2025, 5 o'clock, to discuss real estate, personnel, and legal issues. Catherine, if you can give us our quick update on our grant update initiatives.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as it stands, as of today, we have $12.7 million in grant funding. Later on in the agenda, you're going to see a motion to advertise the Phoenixville Pike-Sidley Road intersection improvement. So just wanted to share a brief update on how that project's moving along since it is included in this grant funding summary.
Thank you. Larry, if you can give us a park and rec update, I know you're up to some no good, I can tell.
A little bit, but thank you, Mr. Chairman. Parks and Rec is a little down right now. It's the prime winter time. But we have our gift card bingo event coming up next month on February 21. That's going to be held at the Great Valley Community Center. And we're going to be promoting local East Whiteland businesses, getting gift cards from them, all in an attempt to fundraise for parks and recreation events and programming throughout the year. Other than that, we do have an update with regard to Eagle Scale candidate Ethan Sansone. He completed the construction of his benches for Bertrand Park, and Public Works will be picking them up to be installed over the next few months. And that's pretty much the big updates for Parks and Rec right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Next, on item number three, Board motions and resolutions. Chris, if you can give us an update on the purchase of the drone?
So as you know, Board members, we... I shouldn't say recently because it's been a long time that we've been working on this drone and the drone project. And there was some unfortunate timing that happened with all the news going on about drones the last month or two, but it's died out quickly. So we had gotten prices on a drone. We were looking at three different drone sizes. We did have a drone operator come from CIPA UAS, Southeastern Pennsylvania Unmanned Aircraft Systems, and gave us a flight with the drone out front here with two of the drones. And they were like small, medium, and large, you know, like the three little bears. So we chose a large one, primarily because the large one is able to fly during bad weather conditions, and it can also haul things, like we can have a spotlight on it. So, and it also, we will be able to talk through it. So if we're looking at like someone who's lost or something along those lines, we can actually, the operator can talk into it and say, you know, tell them what to do. So it can be used for criminal events, public relation, community events. God forbid, like a quarry search or something. We have a couple of quarries here. So if we had to look over a quarry or something. And then Silver Alert and for lost children and so forth. So we're looking forward to having this and being able to go out in almost any weather condition. And the light is like the equivalent of the big helicopter spotlights that you see on TV. And so it should be a really good product for night searches. So, you know, we got, the whole package is $12,853, and it comes with like three sets of batteries to give us plenty of fly time. And we have two pilots that we trained last year, so they're anxious and ready to go. One pilot already went out six months ago and bought his own drone. And he's been flying that, so he's, he has a lot of experience already flying it. So that's where we are, and I assume you're going to have some questions.
I just have one. Is there any airspace restrictions in East Whiteland Township?
Not any that aren't mobile. So I mean, if somebody's coming here or something along those lines, we don't have any nuclear centers or anything like that. There are a lot of restrictions as far as height and dealing with privacy. So you have the same kind of rights of privacy as, if you're a police officer, you have more, obviously. But you would still have to have the same rights you would have of being where you are as a police officer. So like to look down on somebody, it's, you can't get into their private, or you can't look into their windows. You know, you can't come in while they're, you know, if you're on your hot tub or something, they're not allowed to hang out over top. So, not that I think that's going to be a problem for us, but that's what we found out in doing some of the research on this. But it's, you know, you have to be up to 500 feet, so you can't be up higher than 500 feet unless you're launching from a building that's higher than, you know, then you get to add that on top of the 500 feet. So we're really excited about getting it going and, you know, I mean, getting it first of all, and then getting it going and being able to make it work. And hopefully Larry will be able to use it, and maybe the Fire Department, Public Works, and Planning, you know, for getting to areas where we would normally have had to send a person. You can, you get a good bird's eye view or a drone's eye view.
Chris, from a resident's viewpoint, is there a way to distinguish our police drone versus anyone who has a public drone?
Not really. I know at night, if we're using that big spotlight, that's going to be a very easily identifiable one. But drones all have their own internal number that gets broadcast, so somebody will know that it's the police. So from that perspective, but I mean, it's not like it has a police badge hanging off of it. This one is only two by two, even though, or roughly, or 26 by 26 inches. So even though I say it's the bigger one, it's not like as big as a Volkswagen or something.
Okay. Any questions from the Board members? Donna, public? All right. Rich, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. Make a motion to authorize the purchase of the DJ1 Matrix 30 Thermal Drone from Southeastern PA Unmanned Aircraft Systems, $12,853.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye. And passes?
Thank you.
You've gone from the car salesman to the drone salesman. Okay. We move on now to public hearings. I'll turn this over to Bernadette Kearney for procedures.
Am I on? Okay. We're going to open up the conditional use hearing. I'm going to read a portion of the notice. This is the application of 52 East Swedesford Partners LP for conditional use pursuant to Section 200-39D of the zoning ordinances. Permitting uses for mixed-use development to develop the property at 52 East Swedesford Road, identified as UPI Number 42-4-260.4 as a multifamily, one- and two-bedroom unit apartment complex with retail component and an office component in one of the proposed buildings and passive recreation open space. The proposed development will consist of 220 residential units, a separate clubhouse facility, a separate gym facility, separate garage facilities, approximately 12,000 square feet of total retail space, approximately 12,000 square feet of total office space, and passive recreation open space. The property is located in the Office Business Park Zoning District and in the Corporate Overlay District. The conditional use approval, or the requested conditional use approval includes amendment of the existing conditional use decision dated July 13, 2016, issued in favor of Swedesford Square Apartments, capital L slash capital C-A-L Limited Partnership, then the equitable owner and now the current fee owner with Atlantic Properties Trust as the then-fee owner of the adjacent property 54/56 Swedesford Road, identified as 42-4-216.4A and now known as the Arlo Apartment Homes. I'm going to mark a series of exhibits. These, this exhibit booklet has been provided to the board and to the applicant's attorney. Yes, I see Mr. Kalin. The conditional, I'm sorry, I'm going to go through the conditional, the table of contents of the exhibits. They'll all be Board One. So B1, Conditional Use Application with Attachment and Conditional Use Decision in Order dated June 8, 2016. B2, The Deed for 52 East Swedesford Road. B3, The Current Survey by ASH Associates, Inc. B4, Plans Prepared by Howell Engineers Dated November 20, 24, which include the overall parcel plan, the existing conditions plan, the proposed condition plans, the grading plan, zoning compliance Table A, Table B, and Table C. B5, The Elevations Prepared by Architectural Concepts PC, dated 11/25/2024, and that's five pages. B6, The Conceptual Building Renderings Prepared by Architectural Concepts PC, dated 11/25/2024, that's seven pages. B7, The Fiscal Impact Analysis Prepared by David C. Babbitt, AICP, dated 11/24/24. B8, The Trip Generation Analysis by Heinrich &amp; Klein Associates, Inc. B9, The 11/27/24 Letter from the Applicant to the Adjacent Owner, capital L hyphen slash C-A-L Limited Partnership, Arlo Apartments, with the attached Federal Express notification and proof of delivery of the filing of the conditional use application. B10, The December 6, 2024 Arrow Review Letter. B11, The December 10, 2024 Land Concepts Review Letter. B12, The 12/12/24 TCA Review Letter. B13, The 12/18/24 Bowman Review Letter. B14, The 12/16/2024 Architectural Concepts PC Response Letter to TCA Review. B15, The 12/30/2024 Letter from Heinrich &amp; Klein Associates, Inc. with Revised Trip Generation Analysis. B16, The January 5, 2025 Email and Letter to the Daily Local News with the Legal Notice. B17, The Proof of Publication for Advertising of the Legal Notice on January 7 and January 14, 2025. B18, The Posting of the Property with the Public Hearing Legal Notice, with the attached notice and image of posting notice. B19, The 12/19/2024 Buffer Map with Attached Buffer Zone List. B20, The January 10, 2025 Letter from Applicant to the Adjacent Owner, capital L slash C-A-L Limited Partnership, Arlo Apartments, with the date of the conditional use hearing. B21, The Zoning Ordinance Number 361-2024. And B22, The January 17, 2025 Bowman Review Letter. I will ask, I do see the applicant's attorney present, if there's anyone in the audience here for this application or online who's requesting party status? Seeing no one in the audience, I'll ask Donna, is there anyone online?
No.
No, okay. I will indicate that we did receive, and I don't normally mark, an email from Jennifer Ruddy dated January 13, 2025, that she indicates, please accept this as my, and it says dissection, but I think it's disapproval for the conditional use, the zoning of the above referenced property, and that's Jennifer Ruddy. I did provide a copy of that to the applicant's attorney, but again, I don't normally mark them. If the person is here and the applicant has the right to cross-examine, then I will mark it. With that, I will ask, Mr. Kalin probably also has some exhibits? Can he take that?
Yeah, he can.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ron Callion. I'm Attorney with the Law from the Fox Rothschild. I'm here representing the applicant this evening, 52 East Swedesford Partners LP. I have some updated exhibits. I believe your Solicitor provided, did you provide them as you indicated to me, the updated plans?
Yes, they were emailed to the Board of Supervisors. I did not mark them as exhibits, though.
Okay. I'd like to have those marked now, and I can distribute hard copies to the board.
I didn't know if you had a bulk or you just want to mark them?
I have them both. I have the updated development plans and the building renderings.
As an exhibit booklet or just separate?
Just separate, just separate.
Then we'll mark as A1? I don't know, I'm not sure which one you're going to count first.
The civil plans prepared by Howell Engineering.
I believe those are eight pages, correct? I would mark them, the eight pages will be marked A1. If they're the same as the ones you sent, I have.
And just for the record, these plans are... I'd just like to know for the record that the plans are dated 1/14/25. As the date of last revision. And then next will be the architectural renderings, stamped with TriPoint Properties and Architectural Concepts, dated January 17, 2025. And again, these are updated from the original application materials with the, with the renderings.
And if I'm not mistaken, that was 29 pages?
Yes.
Yes, so we'll mark that as Exhibit A2, the entire 29 pages.
Okay, so, gentlemen, we're back. We've been here multiple times, and we've gone before the Planning Commission with our proposed plan, and in front of you several times. We've taken your advice and your comments to heart. We've developed the plan accordingly. And then upon filing of the application, we've gone back and forth with the township consultants to address their comments. We think we have, we think we have pretty clear, clean review letters with outstanding items, really only pending land development, and will be taken care of during the land development process. With me tonight is Mr. Hicks to be sworn in.
Excuse me, I do.
Mr. Hicks, can you please state your full name for the record?
Andrew Hicks, A-N-D-R-E-W-H-I-C-K-S.
And what is your home address?
914 Ken Mara, that's K-E-N-M-A-R-A Drive, Westchester, PA 19380.
And what is your affiliation with the owner applicant?
I'm the owner of TriPoint Properties and also the general partner of 52 East Swedesford Partners.
And what are your responsibilities with regards to the owner and applicant?
My company, TriPoint Properties, we are the agent for 52 East Swedesford Partners. We are responsible for the day-to-day activity and business of 52 East Swedesford Road. And we're responsible for the financial well-being of the investment.
And can you please describe your real estate, commercial real estate development experience?
Sure. I've owned and operated TriPoint Properties for 24 years. Prior to that, I worked for other real estate organizations for approximately eight years.
And throughout that experience, have you developed both residential and commercial properties?
Yes. Multiple different property types, but to include residential, retail, and office.
And are you familiar with the conditional use application? That's the subject of the hearing this evening?
Yes, I am.
And are you familiar with the proposed project site?
Yes, I am.
Are you familiar with the surrounding neighborhood?
Yes, I am.
Can you please explain to the board again, possibly refresh their memory, as to the need for this project and applicant's rationale for moving forward with it?
Sure. In March of 2020, 52 East Swedesford Partners purchased 52 East Swedesford Road, which is a three-story, 135,000-square-foot office building in the Great Valley Corporate Park. It sits on 10 and a half acres. Shortly after we purchased it, COVID hit the United States. The state of Pennsylvania was shut down for a while. During that time, all the tenants in the building were restricted to work from home. After that happened, most of them did not come back into the building. As their leases expired, they left the building or they used mechanisms in their lease to vacate the building. The building has been vacant now for well over a year. During the last four-plus years that we've owned the property, we've had very few showings. And the leasing, the office leasing market in the Great Valley Corporate Center has struggled, and vacancies have increased. About two years ago, we decided to pursue an alternative plan to our original business plan, which was to significantly redevelop the property and lease it out as office. Because of what has happened over the last four-plus years in the office market, we decided that we needed to redevelop the property, and we looked at multiple different ways of doing that. We found the highest and best use, which would be the best for the township and for us, would be a mixed-use scenario with multifamily residential, retail, and office. For the last year and a half or more, we've worked with the township to, and we've, at one point showed them 11 or 12 different possible development plans for the property. During this time, we took recommendations from the township, and we narrowed it down to the project plan that we are asking conditional use approval for. And we believe that this is the best way forward for the property because we don't see the office market coming back significantly for quite some time, if at all.
And just if you could describe for the board what efforts you made to relet the property and, you know, why you believe that you were unable to do so?
Sure.
Challenges you faced?
Since we purchased the property, we've had third-party leasing companies assisting us. First, we used Newmark, and then we've switched to CB Richard Ellis, both who have a significant presence in the Great Valley Corporate Center, as well as the Philadelphia area market. During this time, they've used all of their contacts, expertise, to market the building throughout the region. And we just have not been able to find a tenant. Big reason is, is because the design of the building, the current building has 45,000 square foot floor plates. It doesn't divide very well, so the smallest tenant that we can really put in there is approximately 22,000 square feet. And over the last three, four years, there haven't been a lot of tenants of scale looking to relocate into the Great Valley Corporate Center.
Now, we provided updated development plans and architectural renderings here this evening, marked as A1 and A2. If you could just discuss the particulars first of the development plan for the board, and then the architectural renderings briefly, to kind of bring the board up to speed as to the changes and the minor updates that have been made and why those updates were made.
Sure. The original idea going into the development process was, the property currently is, like you said, a 135,000-square-foot office building with a 45,000-square-foot floor plate. There's a tremendous amount of parking, so the property right now is 10 and a half acres, and almost all of it is asphalt and building footprint. And what we wanted to do is to try to add more green space throughout the development. So the first thing we did is, we designed the project to fit with inside the perimeter curbing, so we would not go so we would not go further into the existing green space. And then we went to a campus mid-rise design for the apartments. So we have three buildings that comprise the two hundred and twenty units. None of the three buildings are connected. And then we have a separate building for the first floor retail and the second floor office. And then we also have a clubhouse, a separate gym building. And then we have, in the rear, we have some fourteen private individual garages that would be available for rent. We also are including a large dog park as well as a perimeter walking trail around the property. We are reducing the impervious coverage with this plan by over an acre and a half. So we're significantly adding green space to the to the development. So the civil update plans, there were some comments about some of the sidewalks not being five feet wide. They all are, that was adjusted and fixed. There were some comments about drive aisles. Those were adjusted. And then there was some labeling inconsistency. Two buildings were labeled, I think, Building C. So now they're appropriately labeled Building B and C.
And Mr. Barner, if you could call up the development plan, the updated plan that we provided this evening for the proposed conditions plan, so the board can have a look at it. I believe that's page three. And Mr. Hicks, if you you just want to walk the board through the plan with some more detail?
Can you identify which plan is brought up? I think it is C U zero one point two? Point three. So part of Exhibit A one, the third page of that. Thank you.
So our property is the top half of this plan. It includes, we can call Building A, which sits closest to Swedesford Road. That's a two-story building with a first floor containing retail. Twelve thousand gross, eleven thousand actual leasable square footage. The second floor is office, again, twelve thousand gross, eleven thousand leasable. The three buildings, Building B, Building C, Building D, are all multifamily buildings. They're four stories tall. They are slab-on-grade and they're stick-built buildings. The Building D, actually because of the grade of the property. So the highest part of the property is by Swedesford Road and it tails off as it goes towards Route two oh two. Building D, because of the existing grade of the property, will have a seventy-two car space parking garage underneath it. And then in the back here, these two buildings, each one has seven individual private garages. And then we have a clubhouse building right here. And we have a separate gym building over here. And then our dog park is at the very back. This, where the dog park is, that was all, that's asphalt today. So all of that asphalt will get removed to create that dog park. And then we have this perimeter trail system that would just wrap around the outside of the property.
And just for the record, Mr. Hicks, when referring to the dog park is referring to the area highlighted with the dog bone? Just so everybody's clear.
Yes, that's correct.
Mr. Hicks, if you could discuss for the board some of the proposed retail uses that you might be considering for the site?
Sure. We'd be looking at all retail uses, but we'd specifically be looking for possibly a breakfast and lunch restaurant establishment. And then we'd also be looking possibly for a local grocer.
And and office space, do you have any targets presently for the office space? Or are you just going to put that out generally to market with a broker?
Once we get further along in the development process, we'd begin our leasing activity. The nice thing about the eleven thousand square feet that we have, we can have very small tenants down to like twelve hundred square feet and we can accommodate the the smaller tenants.
Ron, you have to talk into the mic so that people.
Sorry. I'm a little under the weather today, so my voice isn't the best. I apologize. Mr. Hicks, if you can, describe for the board the proposed parking on the site and confirm for the board that, you know, you intend to provide all the required parking?
Okay, all of the parking on the site is surface parking except for the seventy-two spaces that are beneath Building D. But by putting those seventy-two spaces underneath, it allows us to add additional green space. We've tried to make it so all of the, we meet all the parking requirements, so we meet code for each one.
And I noticed in the development plan packet, C U zero one point five, a new landscaping plan that was not included with the original submission to the board. If you could describe the proposed landscaping plan, you know, why it was provided and discuss the landscaping in general for the project for the board?
The the plan, the landscaping plan provided is a concept plan. As we get further along, we'll go into much greater detail. The current property outside of the existing curb line, that green space has existing mature trees. All of those trees will be preserved. So basically, what we're talking about is the landscaping where the dog park is, which will be a combination of trees and shrubs. And then a trees throughout the the parking lot and then appropriate landscaping, shrub material, flower material around the each of the buildings.
And can you just confirm for the board here this evening that you will comply with the township ordinances regarding landscaping in connection with the land development process?
Yes, we will.
In your opinion, Mr. Hicks, would the proposed project be detrimental to substantially injure or detract from the use of adjacent properties?
No, not at all.
And can you explain why you believe that to be so?
Sure. Our adjacent property is Arlo Apartments. Right now and with this plan, we currently share access in and out of the property and that will remain as-is. Because of the adjacent development and the entries in and out of the property, when we looked at all the different possible uses, this was by far the best use for, to be compatible with Arlo Apartments next door. We're also bringing in retail, which I believe will benefit our adjacent property as well.
Mr. Hicks, in your opinion, would the proposed project cause any undue congestion of pedestrian or vehicular traffic on or about the site?
Uh, no. Currently, the office building, when it was last filled prior to COVID, we would have between five hundred and five hundred and fifty employees coming in and out of the building. And our traffic consultant believes that the new development plan would actually reduce the morning and evening peak trips. So it actually, in theory, would lessen the burden in that immediate area.
And with with respect to the traffic study, we refer the board to the updated traffic generation analysis that was provided by our traffic consultant. I'll have him testify here this evening. So any specific questions regarding that yet? I believe he'd be the most appropriate to 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 address. Mr. Hicks, in your opinion, would the proposed project endanger the safety of persons or property by improper location or design of facilities for ingress and egress?
Uh, no.
And again, would that be because you're using the existing ingress and egress?
We are. That's correct.
In your opinion, would the proposed project increase the danger of fire or otherwise endanger public safety?
Uh, no.
And in your opinion, would the proposed project overcrowd the land or create an undue concentration of population on the property?
No, actually, like I said before, will increase the green space and it'll be actually a better use than what's there now.
In your opinion, would the proposed project impair an adequate supply of light and air to adjacent property?
No.
And in your opinion, would the proposed project adversely affect transportation or unduly burden water, sewer, school park, or other public facilities?
No.
In your opinion, would the proposed project adversely affect the public health, safety, welfare, and morals?
No.
In your opinion, would the proposed project run counter to the spirit and purpose of the ordinance?
No.
And presently as designed, are you aware that any variance relief, you know, is required?
Uh, no, I do not.
In your opinion, would the proposed project have a material adverse impact on the logical, efficient, and economical extension of public services and facilities such as public water or public sewer and fire protection and public schools?
No.
In fact, in connection with the foregoing, did you not provide the board with a fiscal impact study by your consultant?
Yes, we did.
And what were the results of that?
That it was positive for the township.
Now, when you say positive, do you mean it will increase revenues and not expenses?
Yes, that's correct.
And are you willing to work with the township through its planning commission and the board of supervisors in the land development process to address any planning concerns that may arise?
Yes, we will.
I have no more questions if the board would like to question Mr. Hicks.
Before I totally lose it. Thanks, Andrew. You mentioned that one of the retail spaces would be possibly used for for market. If that if that can't be established, do you have a secondary type of usage for that?
Not specifically today, but we definitely, we own other properties that have retail tenants. We would probably go through our rent roll and talk to our other tenants and see if it might be interested in making them move, expanding over. Otherwise, we will try to lease the space to the highest and best use that we can find.
Okay. And of the total units that you've got there, how many units have three bedrooms?
Zero.
How many units have two bedrooms?
Uh, ninety.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple. Will you have security on-site twenty-four seven or at all?
I do not. I don't know yet. We will definitely have security measures. We will definitely have cameras on-site. Whether or not we have twenty-four seven security, I'm not sure yet.
Will you have a maintenance person on-site at least, you know, what, six to six, seven to seven?
Yes, just like all of our properties, we'll definitely have maintenance people available to take care of the property.
You have a manager there also?
Yes.
Okay. After leasing also?
We'll also have leasing, yes.
Okay. Leases, what is, what will you market as your, the term of your leases, the minimum term?
I'm not sure yet. Probably six months, but our, we would prefer to have somewhere between twelve and fifteen months. That's our primary objective.
Okay. Will you agree to a condition that there may be no lease less than, would like a year, but go for six months? We don't want overnight stays.
Absolutely.
We have had trouble with that and we don't need another one.
Yes, we're not looking for short-term rentals.
Okay. That's all I have. Thanks.
After Richard, Richard Scott, I don't really have any questions for you. Thank you.
I I had a few. I'm not sure if Mr. Hicks is going to address. I just want to have for the record that you're meeting all the development standards for mixed-use development as set forth in the ordinance at E.
Correct.
All those will be met. You're not asking for any.
Correct. We are not asking for any relief or variance relief.
And then I don't know if Mr. Hicks was going to address this, the Arlo, the contact with Arlo, if there's any response from Arlo?
I can, I I can address that. First off, you know, since we started this process, you know, a year and a half ago, almost two years ago, you know, prior to filing the conditional use application, you know, Mr. Hicks and his broker, you know, did reach out to Arlo with respect to, you know, the potential plans, our potential plans for this site. And then I'll let Mr. Hicks discuss, you know, the response that we received to those communications. In connection with the conditional use application, we have sent several letters, which are part of the record, very detailed. I mean, we're not trying to hide anything. We included full copies of the application, all exhibits, a full explanation in the letter, and requested that Arlo contact us if they have any questions, comments, or concerns. We also made it very clear that if we didn't hear from them by the time the hearing took place, that we would deem their lack of response to be to having, you know, no questions, comments, or concerns, to not having any issues. Further, you know, I do also point to Section two hundred thirty-nine E four of the ordinance, which clearly indicates that properties which are, you know, approved as mixed-use under a prior conditional use can be subdivided off, sold, which took place here, and further developed by that purchaser, you know, without without having to comply with, you know, certain of the zoning requirements in the ordinance. The the only requirements that were identified were making sure that the overall corporate overlay requirements in two hundred were were complied with on an overall basis between the both properties. So, you know, our interpretation is, you know, if if, you know, the township, that it is implied, you know, in the specific language and the conditions that are used in that section, you know, that the purchasing or the purchaser of the subdivided property, you know, can go and develop it on its own, provided, again, it meets the overall floor area requirements and such, which we have testified and exhibited that we do. And to the extent there's any ambiguity, obviously, as your counsel will advise you, you know, it's Hornbook law that, you know, in the event of any inconsistencies or vagueness in the ordinance, that those matters are deemed, you know, to be decided in favor of the applicant. And really, at this point, I mean, we got in touch with them multiple times. Andy will testify as to, you know, his or his broker's conversations with them. And, you know, they had an opportunity, they received Boku notice, have elected not to show up here this evening. They'll oppose the application in any way or even make any comments. So we're comfortable, you know, moving forward and we hope the board would be too at this point. Can't really force somebody to, you know, get involved if they don't want to.
I I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, did Arlo make any response to anyone?
Uh, no, they did not.
Okay. So under G, the amendments to the prior conditional use application, can someone testify in reference to, are you making anything non-conforming or, let's say, worse for Arlo?
We believe that we're actually making it better for them.
Okay. Can you explain that?
Yes, I can, um, because when the zoning for the overlay was modified and the FARs and were adjusted, we didn't use all of the available FAR. So, in theory, um, they could expand, they could have an outbuilding, they could grow the size of one of their existing buildings or add additional, um, uh, garages, private garages. Um, so in, in, from a statistical standpoint, the zoning change and what we're accomplishing here, we believe actually benefits them, and right now, they, um, are adjacent to a vacant office building that we maintain, but it's just a very large structure, and we share an entrance, so everybody that comes in to look at leasing at Arlo drives right by it, and I'm sure it's one of the first questions that they ask in the leasing office is, what's going on next door?
One other question, I, I don't recall if either of the letters, was the, uh, plan sent with the letter?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so the plan, was the, uh, new ordinance sent with the letter?
Yes, we've, we sent, uh, the complete conditional use application package to them, and this was, and we've, um, been in contact previously before we even filed that, um, in a non-written informal, uh, dialogue with them, and there was a period of time where we were, we approached them to see if they had interest in, um, joining our project, and they reviewed it, they looked at it, and what happened was is they had some changes in senior leadership, and ultimately, there was a determination that they, at this time, were not looking to, to development in Pennsylvania.
And, and I'm sorry, you did say you sent the ordinance to them, right? I'm writing fast.
Yes, yes, and, and everything was explained in detail in text, in explanation in the body of the letter.
That's all the questions I have.
Do you have any other apartment projects similar to this in the area?
Uh, none that I currently own, but I've, um, done a project smaller than this, but it's very similar to this, uh, in Lancaster, in the city.
Will you be offering any units furnished?
Um, I don't know yet.
Cause that usually means short-term.
Yeah.
So...
That isn't on our radar right now. Um, you know, the way we designed the one and two bedrooms, we believe that what's gonna stand out for us is that, we believe that they're livable size, so our one-bedroom is seven hundred and sixty-nine square feet with a seventy-four foot, square foot balcony, and our standard two-bedroom is over eleven hundred square feet. We have a smaller two-bedroom that's a thousand eighty-five square feet, and we have four two-bedrooms that are slightly larger just because of the configuration of building D. But other than that, I mean, um, because of the size of them, we believe that, um, you know, it's gonna be a marketing advantage to us because the trend seems to be going smaller and smaller with, uh, one and two-bedroom.
Will you be phasing the construction so as to complete one building, lease it, then move to the next? Or you intend to do everything at the same time?
I think we're gonna do everything at the same time and, I don't know how much detail you want and the reason why, but, um, because of, because of the grade and building D and the parking structure, we've decide, determined that it would be best if we just start and just go through completion.
Okay, that's good.
Rich, I, I'm gonna bring you in on this in a second, but Andrew, another question I've got, are you, do you have any projected costs, rental costs for like a one-bedroom? I'll keep it, I'll keep it to just to that, one-bedroom?
Well, when we are, when we complete the project, obviously, we're gonna do a market survey and then see what our competitors are charging and then, you know, make a decision from there. Um, right now, I would say if we had this project completed, our one-bedroom would probably be about two thousand, twenty-one hundred, somewhere in there maybe?
Is there, I think we've had some discussions, but I, I thought I would bring it up again here. Um, I think it would be great if we could have some number of unit, units, at a under-market value price to help out some of the residents who can't afford two thousand dollars a month. And I'd be happy to have, I know there's, the county's tried this. Every developer says they can't do it, but I know you, and I, I think you can do it, I know you can do it, right? You can do anything. But what, as far as a number of units that could be below market value if those individuals met certain wage criteria, that would be sort of median-based to the county. Would you consider that?
I would, I would certainly consider working with the township and county to try to make something like that.
Okay, then let's, you know, let's, let's pursue that.
I mean, I, I will say that, um, two thousand five, six, seven, eight, I worked with, um, Reading City, City of Reading, doing something what you're talking about.
Right. And part of, part of the reason why I'm asking you the way I ask you is because the way you approach this board with all the different options and the flexibility that you provided, which has also allowed you to get to this point where a lot of other developers wouldn't have been sitting here doing a conditional use. Um, another, another question I've got is that, would you anticipate that you might have any corporate leasing? And, and the reason why I'm asking that, and this is why I refer to Rich. Rich's point is well-taken, we have issues in this township with certain situations with transient, um, short-term leases. And we're trying to clean it up, and we will clean it up, but Rich, i- if, if it was a corporate, if there was some type of corporate sponsorship, is there a length of period of time in your expertise that you would maybe feel comfortable, you still want a, a six-month period?
Uh, I would still want a minimum six months, but depends on the company. Uh, the company, the visit, the, it's hard to, I, I don't know enough in that market to generalize.
Okay.
We, we've been, we've in the past, we've done a, a master lease, um, a couple of units to a, you know, a substantial company that, um, would sign a twelve-month lease, and then they would furnish it themselves using a third-party company coming in to furnish it, and then they would be the leaseholder for that twelve-month period. And typically, those actually run longer than twelve months, um, our experience has been like two to three years at a time, and they've had, um, people live in those for extended periods of time. During the, say, two or three years, there might have been like two or three people that have, you know, lived in those units. And we have not had any problems with that because of the, um, corporate sponsor and the employees that they put in there typically are valuable employees that, you know, are working a couple days a week at that location. So, I don't know, is that what your concern is or something different?
Oh, concern is more shorter, you know, uh, overnight or week to week, um, has to be at least six months. Uh, uh, leases, um, I would think has to be, I would think you would want it to.
Yeah, absolutely.
For a very new project like this, yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
I, I would say if, you know, if, if, if this passes and all, that if you get into a situation with a corporate master lease with a reputable company that's less than the six months that Ri- Rich is suggesting, you know, come, come to the board and we can talk it through.
Sure, not a problem.
That'll only take six months to work out.
I, I, we can do in the short-term, two months.
Okay, that's fine, any other questions? I have two more witnesses.
Good.
Okay, Andy, thank you. Mr. Cherry. Okay, next I have Mr. James Cherry, the architect on the project. Mr. Cherry, uh, will you please be sworn in?
I do.
And can you please state your full name for the record and spell it?
James L. Cherry, C-H-E-R-R-Y, the third.
And what is your home address?
Four-two-one Price Street, West Chesterboro.
And who, who is your current employer?
Architectural Concepts.
And what is your position there?
I'm an owner and, uh, I'm a registered architect.
And how long have you been current, in your, uh, current position?
Twenty-eight years.
And have you testified at zoning hearings previously?
Yes, I have.
Um, can you give us a ballpark figure as to how many and if you were qualified as an expert?
I testified as an architect in Pennsylvania, Delaware, New Jersey, uh, maybe a dozen.
And I'm gonna hand you a document we're gonna have marked, I guess, is it B-three? A-three? Can you please describe this document I handed to you?
It's a, it's my CV.
And does this document accurately reflect your education, qualifications, and experience?
Yes, it does.
Madam Solicitor, I'm, I'm happy to voir dire Mr. Cherry unless the board is comfortable with his qualifications. They have him qualified as an expert in the area of architecture.
It's fine, no problem.
Now, Mr. Cherry, are you familiar with the conditional use application as the subject of the hearing this evening?
Yes, I am.
And what is your role in the project?
I'm the, uh, lead architect.
And what are your responsibilities?
Uh, the overall building design and general master planning, working with the applicant.
And are you familiar with the proposed site and surrounding neighborhood?
Yes, I am.
In your opinion, is the proposed mixed-use development for the site appropriate for conditional use approval?
Yes, it is, it's consistent with, uh, zoning as well as, uh, meeting a lot of the goals of the common.
And have you had the opportunity to review the review letter of the township's consultant Tom Camita with respect to the proposed design of the project?
Yes, I have, I have reviewed it and, uh, provided a response to it.
And what is your interpretation of the results of those communications with Mr. Camita?
In general, there are fairly light, uh, uh, comments, I was, uh, most of the, or any open issues, uh, will be addressed during the land development process. We'll work with, who's my township staff consultants, uh, individuals like Mr. Camita, and make sure that all the open comments are addressed to satisfy everyone's concerns.
Now, with respect to the updated plans that were introduced as A-two here this evening, um, can you describe the updates to those, uh, renderings and then walk the board through the updated renderings? If we could have Mr. Barner?
In general, it's consistent with the last round of documents that you've sued. Um, we just developed a little bit more within the courtyard area as well as, uh, some of the office building, uh, clubhouse and, uh, fitness center.
Some of those buildings were, uh, kind of, uh, in the back burner as we were developing the, uh, multifamily apartment homes. Uh, so you just, uh, just provided a little more clarity or additional information on those.
There are, uh, evidence in the, uh, file records.
And if we could have, um, Mr. Barner go to the, uh, color renderings.
So, we're looking at the general overall, uh, follow Sweetsford Road, just kind of sitting above the Petri's that's moved. Uh, that's center of the lower building is the clubhouse, it's got a multi-level roof. That's where the leasing office, uh, some, uh, community room, parcel, mailboxes, toilet rooms, as well as, uh, work-from-home space and common, uh, shared space available to the residents. So, the right, uh, lower right-hand portion is, if you just catch the corner of the, uh, retail as well as office building, it's two-story building, uh, each for roughly twelve thousand square feet. This is a view taken from the southwest corner, uh, this would be number two of two, uh, in that, you'll see the dog park, uh, to the lower right-hand corner as well as some of those individual rednecks and libraries. Around the perimeter of the site, we have, uh, a walking trail, uh, and along that walking trail, there'll be, uh, individual events, whether it's seating or, or obstacles, some type of, uh, asset recreation space, uh, that's available and accessible to the public and ties into the existing.
Public sidewalks.
At that corner of Sweetsford, uh, there's a bus station, uh, bus stop down there, so it does provide a walkable, uh, or transferable. Again, as we're entering the, uh, proposed development, we have a minus sign on the left, we're a place over here fifty-two G's, uh, Sweetsford Road, uh, we're looking at the end caps of the, uh, again, apartment buildings, uh, four, four slab, one grade, stick frame, old spreader. Uh, the building in between is the clubhouse, so as we approach, uh, approaches development, the existing curb cuts and, uh, roadways, uh, are maintained from the existing geometries and configurations. So, we're not gonna change that. We do have a, uh, fully accessible, uh, loop road within their development. It's, uh, provides good clean access for emergency vehicles, uh, by, uh, so. That's it, uh, a little more, uh, again, this is some of the differences from the, uh, the last presentation to this, uh, which is just a little more development within, uh, the clubhouse and as you can see, uh, beyond, uh, courtyards. Some of the man. Uh, this view is catching the, uh, what we're proposing, uh, food or breakfast, lunch, uh, grill on that, uh, the lower right-hand pillar of the building, the office, the oven. Uh, this is a view taken from inside the courtyard, uh, doing the backside. Of the key room of that clubhouse, it has the outside, uh, some seating rooms, uh, pool that has some, uh, sun deck as well as, uh, some stuff that, uh, south end of the, uh, courtyard, we've, uh, improved that, uh, area to include, uh, an active turf or a synthetic turf area for, uh, activities such, such as, uh, party meetings and, uh, court hall. This is just a view taken from building D on the floor.
Balcony.
Uh, looking northwest at that balcony, uh, I'm sorry, down.
Athletic court. So, it shows the different, uh, different recreation, uh, activities there.
Down large.
Fire pits, some barbecues, lounge chairs.
This is a view that you're, uh, supposed to say that's the house, uh, looking out. Those gates and stuff just secure that.
Quarter.
Secure yours, uh, secure the problem of, uh, of, of food. I, I don't think your microphone is pretty good.
Is it on?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Just one. Okay. So this is the two-story office, again, retail on the first floor and office on the second floor. And what you're looking at there is there's separate entrances. The first one on the left is the office, second one is the food store and the. This is rendering of the fitness building. Well, it's a two-story. Well, as a mezzanine, so the mezzanine will have a car, the ground floor will have. Off simulator as well as some weight.
Hey, Mr. Cherry, are you confident that the updated plans, as we presented here this evening, the architectural renderings, provide sufficient information for the board with respect to aesthetics, materials, conceptual design, color, et cetera, as required by the zoning ordinance?
Yes, I am. Buildings all meet the height, area, bulk requirements.
And in your opinion, would the proposed project be detrimental to substantially injure or detract from the use of adjoining properties?
No, it would not be. I think it would enhance Arlo. It would provide, again, a little bit more of a community and neighborhood of housing as well as the additional uses of the retail. Some of that recreation space which Arlo can share in the walking trails.
And in your opinion, would the proposed project cause undue congestion of pedestrian or vehicular traffic?
No, actually, the traffic review study shows that there's a reduction in traffic at peak demand time.
And in your opinion, would the proposed project endanger the safety of persons or property by improper location or design of facilities for ingress or egress?
No, traffic circulation is, again, as mentioned before, the same as it exists today. But it is, it does ensure clean circulation around the entire property for a vehicle, no dead ends.
And in your opinion, would the proposed project increase the danger of fire or otherwise endanger public safety?
No, all buildings will be designed compliant with building codes or all be fully sprinkler buildings and have all life safety accessibility requirements.
And in your opinion, would the proposed project overcrowd the land or create an undue concentration of population?
No, the proposed development is less dense than the allowable.
And in your opinion, would the proposed project impair inadequate supply of light and air to adjacent property?
No, it would not.
In your opinion, would the proposed project adversely affect transportation or unduly burden water, sewer, school, park, or other public facilities?
No, it would not.
And in your opinion, would the proposed project adversely affect the public health, safety, welfare, morals?
No, the public.
In your opinion, would the proposed project run counter to the spirit and purpose of the zoning ordinance?
No, this proposed development is consistent with zoning as well as meets the goals of the comprehensive plan.
And in your opinion, would the proposed project have a material adverse impact on the logical, efficient, and economical extension of public services and facilities? Such as public water, sewer, police, fire protection, and public schools? I have nothing further. Let Mr. Cherry answer any of your questions.
Sure. I've got two questions. In terms of the facade that's there, the smooth face portion, I guess, is stone?
If we can pull the rendering, the intent here is that we have a stone base to the building, so there's one or two stories worth of stone.
Right. And then the smooth, smooth face?
Would be intended to be a composite panel.
How does that wear with time, over time? With color wearing iron, showing dirt and?
Manufacturers are stating there's, the color is integral to them, so it's a minimum 20-year.
Twenty-year? Okay. My only other question is, is in the renderings that shows the dog park, I'm not picking up, I'm not picking up a fenced area. I would assume there's one probably.
There would be a fence specifically following the dog bone area. The walking trail walks past it. It's an area intended to allow the dogs to run free within it, so it'll be the baggies and hands.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
I don't have any questions other than I didn't see any snow in there, so I don't know how realistic this is.
Well, it's colder than it looks.
Okay, all right. Any questions?
I have no questions.
I just wanted to get for the record, the property served by public water, public sewer?
Public water, public sewer, yes.
Is that it? Anything else? Okay, I have one more witness and then we'll wrap it up.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah. Have the traffic engineer come up. And finally, we have the traffic engineer to discuss, you know, his traffic study. And answer questions on the conclusions and whatever else you may have. Mr. Heinrich, can you please state your, actually, let's swear a minute.
I do.
Can you please state your full name for the record and spell it?
Andreas Heinrich, H-E-I-N-R-I-C-H.
Mr. Heinrich, what is your home address?
1134 Heinrich Lane, Ambler, Pennsylvania, 19002.
And who's your current employer?
Heinrich and Klein Associates, Inc.
And how long have you been there?
Since 1991.
And what is your current position?
I'm the owner.
And what are your duties at your employer?
I'm the chief traffic engineer.
And have you testified at zoning hearings previously?
Yes.
Roughly, how many?
Been doing this for over 45 years, so.
And have you been qualified as an expert in the area of traffic engineering and design?
Yes.
We'll have this document marked A4. Can you please describe the document we're gonna have marked as A4 that I just handed you?
It's my CV.
And does that document accurately reflect your education, experience, and qualifications?
Yes.
Unfortunately, we only have one copy here, so I'm happy to pass it over after a while if you would hear. Courtesy, so I haven't served him to qualify as an expert in the area of traffic engineering.
Mr. Heinrich, how long have you been involved with the project?
About three or four months, maybe.
And are you familiar with the conditional use application that is the subject of the hearing this evening?
Insofar as traffic, yes.
And what is your role in the project?
I prepared the trip generation analysis.
And are you familiar with the property that's the subject of the application and the surrounding neighborhood?
Yes.
If you could just discuss the proposed development plan from a traffic engineering and design perspective and, you know, give your thoughts as to the appropriateness of the design.
Well, as has been already testified, the site formerly was a 135,000-square-foot office complex in addition to the parking surrounding the existing building. There are two points of access through or around the adjacent residential development. Full access is provided via the signalized intersection at Valley Stream Parkway. And between that and the site is a right-in, right-out, only unsignalized driveway that provides access to the property.
And based upon your review, is there any need for any additional traffic improvements to be installed in connection with this development?
Not for access or off-site improvements, no.
And did you prepare the traffic study for the owner in connection with this project?
Yes.
And did you review the Township's traffic consultant's review letter of that initial study?
Yes.
And did you then prepare an additional revised and updated traffic study in response to that letter?
Yes, I did.
And did you receive and review a letter from the Township's traffic engineer to your updated study?
Yes, I did.
And what is your understanding of kind of where things stand vis-à-vis the Township's traffic engineer with respect to your study?
It's my understanding that they're pretty much in agreement with what we've done, subject to confirming what tenants actually occupy the retail space.
And can you discuss the updated traffic study and your conclusions for the board?
Yes, we just used standard ITI Institute of Transportation Engineers' trip rates from their document entitled Trip Generation Manual and prepared a comparison in trip generation for the existing office building of 135,000 square feet versus what is now proposed as a mixed-use development with 220 apartments and a 24,000-square-foot two-story office retail building. The results of those comparisons and the numbers in detail are laid out in the report, and I can go through in detail if you would like. But the bottom line totals are that on a daily 24-hour basis during the week, the proposed mixed-use development can be expected to increase traffic modestly by about 45 trips per day. But during the critical peak hours, which traffic engineers focus on, in the morning peak hour, trip generation will decrease compared to the previous office building by 88 total trips. And during the afternoon peak hour, there will be a decrease compared to the existing office building of 77 trips. So when considering the idea of having to do a traffic impact study for the proposed development, the focus of those studies are on peak hours, and during those peak hours, you're gonna see an 88 or 77 trip decrease in traffic compared to the previous use of the site.
And is it your opinion that a traffic, a full traffic impact study won't be necessary in the connection with the land development process?
In my opinion, no, one will not be necessary. And like I said, with the Bowman review, they're pretty much in agreement, subject to finalizing the uses that actually occupy the retail space.
Now, Mr. Heinrich, in your opinion, from a traffic design and impact perspective, would the grant of a conditional use allowing the proposed mixed-use development here this evening be appropriate?
Yes.
Can you explain why do you believe that to be the case?
Because during the peak hours of the, of a typical weekday, you're gonna see a decrease in traffic in comparison with what was previously generated with the office building.
And in your opinion, will the granting of the conditional use cause any unreasonable or unusual traffic concerns or concerns of such a degree in nature so as to warrant denial?
No.
And in your opinion, from a traffic engineering and design perspective, will the conditional use, if granted, be detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the general public?
No, will not.
I have no further questions.
I do have another question. My understanding is that the existing building has got one minor tenant in it, if I recall. I'm wrong, Andrew?
You can call him up. He's still under oath. He could, he can reply, but the answer is no, the property is completely vacant.
Okay, all right, then, then when we were talking last, there was a small tenant in there and they're now gone, so it's totally, it's totally vacant. Okay. So when you're doing the traffic study comparison between then and now, and as you said, previous usage, how do you go about knowing what the previous usage was when the building is empty? There may be some logic that's utilized or assumptions made. I'm just curious. With the building vacant, how do you do a comparison between previous and what's potentially there?
Well, we're at a mid-stage here. So from the same perspective of how do we come up with those same numbers for what's gonna happen in the proposed new uses at the site, we consult, as I said, the ITI Trip Generation Manual and based on the size and type of use of the buildings.
Okay.
The old building being 135,000 square foot office building, and the new buildings being the mix of 220 apartments and the 24,000-square-foot office retail building. So we take those sizes and consult that manual that has all kinds of, all kinds of trip generation database. And we can make a judgment and estimate of the traffic based on those, that empirical data that has been collected by the traffic engineer.
I was just thinking you were doing it hands-on, doing a study of traffic going in and out, which is something we do along our Route 30 quarter. You're using more of a manual-based logic and assumption to come up with the numbers.
As I said, the existing building's vacant and the new buildings aren't there, so it's all vacant, basically, from that perspective.
So you're using a manual basis?
That's correct.
Right, right, okay. Thank you.
I think I know the answer to this, but when you do a traffic study like this, you don't take it beyond, you come up with numbers based on the manual, but you don't take it beyond the exit or entrance in to where those cars are going next. To make a left turn on Valley Stream, to circle around to Paoli, to wherever. That's not the scope.
No, whenever you're doing a traffic study, you look at the scale of traffic that's going to be generated by a development to determine just how far away from the site there will be a reasonable impact that needs to be studied. So if there's 10 trips being added to an intersection, you're not going to go to another level of intersection. Whereas if there's 100 or 1,000, you're gonna go to the next level or the next level after that in terms of radius around the site. In this case, we're decreasing the traffic, which implies that you really don't need to study anything, which is our conclusion as to why a traffic impact study would not be necessary. All we've done here is done the comparison of trips before and after, so to speak.
Yeah, that's what I thought. And the road network and the corporate center, certainly, wherever, two of two to the turnpike will be able to handle any of this, I'm sure.
To the extent that everything was handled well with the previous office building, it'll be less of an impact when this happens.
Just one follow-up, Andrew. In its day, your 135-square-foot building, how many employees were located in there? Do you remember? Did you know?
Between 500 and 500, excuse me, 500 and 550?
You did say that earlier, okay.
In a typical office building, parking is typically four per thousand. This building, with that sea of asphalt, we're over five per thousand because of the type of use historically that has been in that building. So data center, you know, very dense occupancy. So I don't know this for a fact, but I'm guessing that the manual probably doesn't take into account a building that historically has been used to this density and has over five per thousand parking as opposed to four per thousand. So, you know, I think it's probably even gonna be a greater decrease, but we'll see.
I have no questions.
I don't have any questions.
Great. At this point, we'd like to. At this point, we'd like to, you know, rest our case. I'd like to move in my exhibits.
We usually allow anyone in the audience or anyone online if they had any specific questions to ask any questions of the witnesses. We have one online. One online? I don't see anyone in the audience. What's, why don't we go forward with the one online?
Okay, it's Deb Mowbray. Go ahead, Deb.
Hi, I'm Deb Mowbray, 42 Village Way. I just wanted to reiterate something that Scott said earlier. And unfortunately, at this point in the process, I don't know that it's too late to require anything, but certainly something, if the builder wants to continue to be a good steward in East Whiteland and continue to do business, we should think about in the future, and that's the idea of needing more affordable housing. Right now, we no longer have housing, which is affordable, for the people who work in this township, servicing us, working in our grocery stores, our auto shops, our secretaries, our beginning schoolteachers. We have, we no longer have housing, which is affordable, to the kids that are graduating from our high school system. As a matter of fact, you know, it's very different from when I graduated from college, but my kids graduating from college would not afford to live in this township anymore. And that's really a shame that we live in a place where we're telling our own citizens to go away. And so, and we don't even provide adequate comprehensive public transportation for those who are coming into work. So there's a lot of things to be said. We don't need a whole lot more of these, you know, $2,000, $3,000, $4,000 apartment complexes, not for a one-bedroom. Like, it's, a young kid starting out can't afford that. They've got sun homes and car loans and all of it. So just something to think about for the future and something for the builder to consider, again, if they want to be a good steward in East Whiteland and they want to continue to do business here, if we go that way. Thank you very much.
Actually, I did have one more question. It's probably of the, maybe of the architect. Are any of the current trees that are on the property being removed?
I can answer that question. So inside the curb line, yes. Outside the curb line, no.
You hear that, Scott?
Yes, I have. Any big sycamores over there?
Not within the parking lot, no. I just want to make a comment to the last caller. I mean, I completely understand. I have a daughter that's on Saturday moving into an apartment in D.C., and I wish that the rents here were the rents there for her. I mean, she's in a very tough situation, same kind of thing. Unfortunately, it seems like historically, the only really proven permanent remedy to bring the cost of housing down is producing more of it, because we live in a supply and demand world, and even though, you know, these apartments are expensive, they get filled, because people need a place to live, and these are their best options, and they can't afford them. And I do feel bad. I mean, the same thing that this woman was saying, I was talking to my daughter about. You know, when I was her age, it was, you know, a lot easier. I bought my first house, it was $98,000. I mean, I wish it was the same way, but until we build more housing, we're going to have a supply issue, and we're going to have a pricing issue. So in some ways, having our low next to ours, there should be competition, and, you know, it should help with future pricing, and it definitely should help with service, because you have two businesses side by side, you know, selling product, and consumers are going to vote with their rental dollars. So I think it's a good thing for the township.
Okay, I think that was all for the questions, and then we usually allow comments, if anybody has comments. I think Deb made her comment, because there wasn't a question in there.
Now, if you have a comment you'd like to make, go ahead.
Hi, I'm unmuted.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, hold on, my volume's down. So my question is, did I hear it correctly, that these apartments are going to be in the range of like 3,000?
If these apartments were available today, our one-bedroom would be about 2,000, maybe 2,100.
And what larger sizes, what would the larger sizes be?
Probably in the high 2000s. Again, this is theoretical based on today. I mean, really, what would happen is, once these apartments become available, we would do a market study, and we would take a look at our product versus the available product in the market, and we would price accordingly like any other business.
Okay, because, so I know this has to be questions, but, so I guess to the boards and supervisors, we keep approving building of apartments, and they all seem to be high-end. So when are we gonna, when are we gonna actually approve something that the average person may be able to afford?
I think the short but easy answer is, and it's not a likable answer, is when a developer comes to us willing to build an affordable housing project. The hard part here, anywhere in close area, is also the cost of the land, and that is up to the seller of the land, not the buyer developer. It's a very difficult issue. That's the only thing I can think of.
And Carol, we've also, just to let you know, the board and the staff has worked with our folks in Harrisburg and also have talked with Chester County authorities on trying to come up with different methodologies and strategies to try to get affordable housing available for our residents. And to date, there is no, there's no magic pill at this point in time. And, you know, we're trying, we understand. I think Andrew does make a good point. Up until now, there's been limited amount of apartments being added to East Whiteland Township as compared to some other townships, and maybe it is a function of supply and demand. I don't know. That's not my expertise, but we are looking, we ask, and we'll continue to do that.
Okay, Deb Mowbray, go ahead, please.
And I'm going to raise this question to the back, and there can be thumbs down, but have you folks encountered any successful way for this problem in their land in Harrisburg? Katie?
I'm glad to share my thoughts.
Katie Muth is here, and, you know, we've talked to Katie about this, and she's certainly probably had a lot more conversations with different areas, but if you have any thoughts or comments, again, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I think your thoughts are important to us.
You won't join them like the others. Thank you.
I think one of the things that I have found successful in the absence of legislation that mandates a percentage or some sort of, you know, formula for affordable units, and how you define affordable is also in the eye of the beholder, right? So even when we talk about senior housing, seniors cannot afford, I assure you, $2,000, $3,000 a month in rent. So we have a massive gap at all ages for affordable housing, whether we want to call it attainable, affordable, whatever word you want to use. I understand that we're in a hot real estate market in the southeast, but in terms of incentives, if a developer comes to me for grant money, which I've only done one time as my time in office for a economic and redevelopment grant, is that I knew that that landlord developer has tenants and units that take vouchers, did not evict anybody during COVID, predominantly rents to a lot of single parents or people with disabilities or seniors, and said, if you want to build here and you want state money, I'm not, you know, so saying you have to have so many units for veterans. That's my only leverage point as a single legislator in the absence of some sort of, you know, statewide reform. I think that one of the things I wrote down as this was being discussed, and I've said this actually to even the pension board that I serve on, is anyone doing risk assessments relative to the new presidential administration regarding immigration policy, because workforce heavily relies on a lot of immigrant workers, and even in this end of housing where you're talking about corporate housing or people that are here on work visas, do you have a market anymore if some of these policies should be in place? I just say that as like, a business person, I would want to know that, hey, I still have people to rent to in this alleged higher-end market. So the other thing I did have written down was, that you didn't ask about, but I'm going to tell you, is emergency responder access. I always ask that about any project. It's often a last thought, which can be expensive, and as a former athletic trainer who had to approve plans for new athletic facilities, that was one of the top priorities, in and out free MS, you know, access points even in a baseball field. So I always think about that. And sprinklers, I don't know if the four-story height of this project avoids the sprinkler requirement, but I would say if I'm on a board of supervisors, I mandate sprinklers on every single thing that's built in this township. I would have said that before the wildfire eruption that we've experienced over the last couple, two or three years, but I certainly say that now for our first responders, as well as assessing vulnerabilities from gas utilities, because we saw how that worked out in California. It really did not work out well, and I don't know if stormwater management was mentioned, but how you would prevent flooding, there's an underground garage. I'm assuming there's some sort of mechanism of drainage so that if there should be excess water, that that's going to be mitigated. So that's my brain dump of the things that I thought about.
If I may interject, all of those are good points, but they're all typically handled as part of the land development process, not at this stage, so that's kind of putting the cart in front of the horse just a little bit.
Sure, I live in a township where the land development process is quite comical, so I expect people that come into any of my municipalities in Senate District 44 to make the commitments to build responsibly and sustainably and safely, and also include our first responders in that conversation. So it's nothing personal against your project. Just want to make that clear.
And your project is the last one that's coming in like this. Your going forward is going to change. We're going to want to know all of this land development, traffic studies, along with the sketch plan, otherwise we're not talking with you. So you've got underneath the wire on that one. Zach, did we, are we all good? I mean, Katie makes some good points, and the one that jumps out at me is the fire and the sprinkler system. I'm assuming that we do have requirements, our codes, that that is, that they exist in this building.
Yeah, and our fire and emergency services personnel will review it during the land development process. I should have had them look at it at the front end here. Honestly, I didn't actually think about it when we were gathering sort of our traffic reviews and our architectural reviews, but they will do a full review against the fire code and maybe some other operational aspects during the land development process.
And I believe the architect did testify that the buildings are fully sprinkled. So we do have testimony on the record that they're fully sprinkled. I think at this point, and I, oh, I'm sorry. I interrupted you. I did want to make one amendment. My Exhibit B1, I said it was the conditional use application with attachment and conditional use decision order. It should have been July 13, 2016. I had given you the hearing date of June 8. So I just wanted to amend that on the record, and I think you wanted to, Ron, admit your exhibits?
Yes, I'll move our exhibits, I believe, A1 through 4.
A1 through 4, and they'll be accepted if it's acceptable to the board, yes. And then the hearing is closed. I'm sorry, Peter, oh, no. And normally what happens is we're a little different, because this isn't our normal hearing date. Our next hearing date is February 12. Normally, at that time, the board will make their decision at that time.
Is the board willing to consider a decision this evening?
I mean, I don't have a problem saying that I'm in favor of the application. The thing to work out is this condition on the length of leases. I said six. I don't know. That, to me, is the issue with this and any apartment project that comes before us.
And I had written down a few others, one of them being from the Bowman review letter. So there are some, we usually craft the conditions as we do the verbal decision.
And I'll reiterate, I think my general indication is that I look favorably on this, again, with a couple of conditions that we need to work out, including, again, maybe talk a little more detail on the affordable or less market cost units and how many and around that a little bit, see if we can tweak that. And again, on the corporate lease versus an individual lease, we can work on that as well. But again, my inclination is to move forward with this project.
In agreement with Rich and Scott, my inclination is to be agreeable to the project and...
So at this point, we'll close the hearing, and the verbal decision will be rendered at the February 12, 2025.
Sure. And if you want to, if you have conditions ahead of time that you would like to get over to us to review, that's probably most efficient, that we can review it ahead of time and work that out, so we can get a final approval.
We could certainly do that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your time, Zee.
Thank you for your time.
Good job making through it all, Ron. I can see you're not feeling well.
You want to lice all the microphones?
Donna, can we move on with that here?
Yes.
Nothing works around here without Donna's dump frame on it. Moving on to motion to award and motions for advertisement. John Neill, tell us about our latest dump truck adventure.
Okay, we're asking for approval to advertise on Minnesota bid, the sale of the 2014 F-550 dump truck.
I think Peter wants to buy it.
How much for it?
You mentioned the last price we got, and I think you're in the range of $38,000.
What size is it?
This is a 550.
550. Seems like it held its value. I'd like to make a motion to approve the sale...
Just advertise.
Advertising of the sale of Unit 381, F-550, 24, 2014 dump truck.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Get it done. Get it done.
The, oh, the mic. It's all right. I could just pull it through.
You could.
I would.
Catherine, would you like to just give a little overview on our advertisement for our open space committee ordinance?
Yes, this is an ordinance for the establishment of the Open Space Review Committee, which is a requirement of the Open Space Tax Referendum that was passed in this prior general election. This committee will consist of seven members. Three to four of them will serve at large and the three or four will also be representatives of the Park and Rec Board, Planning Commission, Historical Commission, and the EAC. So if there's any of those members who are interested too, please keep that in mind. This will be for a public hearing on February 12th and then we'll expect the application period to open for those who are interested in serving.
I'll make a motion to authorize advertisement for Open Space Committee hearing for February 12th, 2025.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and passes. Catherine, another road improvement project here?
This is an authorization for advertisement of the bid for the Phoenixville Pike and Sibley Road intersection improvements. Just a brief overview of the project and some history. This project is being spearheaded by Charlestown Township. There's a grant that funds about two-thirds of the project cost and Charlestown is taking the lead on this project. So by authorizing the bid for this work to proceed, the board would also be delegating the authority for the award of the bid to Charlestown Township, subject to review and approval by the township traffic engineer.
I just wanted to ask a question so everyone's aware. While we're asking Charlestown to take control, there's still a lot of input from us on the overall project as well, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Rich, would you like to make a motion?
Well, the design is in place already, which we have had input to, right?
That's right. We've worked in joint cooperation with Charlestown to design both the roadway and the signal improvements.
Right, okay. I'll make a motion to authorize Charlestown to move forward to get a bid for the Phoenixville Pike-Sibley Road Intersection Improvement.
I'll second that.
You have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and passes. Wayne, this is a new one here for tobacco-free areas?
Yes, so in an effort to make our parks as safe as possible, in conjunction with our Open Space Ordinance passing, and we look at our parks' rules and ordinances and code, the Parks and Rec Board with full recommendation has brought forth a tobacco-free ordinance for all of our parks, trail areas, and any new construction projects that may come in the future. And this is all in an effort to maintain safety, children's health, and make our parks as safe and accessible as possible.
So will there be any fines associated with anyone caught smoking in the smoking-free tobacco area?
That is in coordination with our current rules per police discretion.
So it'll be...
Chris, the face is priceless. Priceless. Anyway, we can work on that.
So this is all also in effort to work with Pennsylvania and be a part of Young, Young Lungs at Play, which provides free signage and kind of designate certain areas as tobacco-free and really just kind of makes it this really statewide township-wide effort.
Peter, would you like to make a motion?
I had a quick question.
Okay.
But I will make a motion. Just to get back to Chris and the police force, will they be the ones that would have to enforce a complaint?
Yes, per our park rules and ordinances, enforcement does fall under police regulation.
You want to be calling John Mahida. Code's enforcement, you'd be calling the police. Okay. Just one clarification on that. Anything else?
Can you deputize Peter to give out tickets?
Yes. I was not fishing.
Rich, would you like to make a motion to deputize Peter?
Let me, let me usurp that by making a motion to authorize advertisement for tobacco-free areas in the park.
I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and passes.
Thank you.
But I have to give you a hard time. Moving on to Zach Bonner and planning and development.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have two items here under the consider decision portion of the agenda. The first is a project on Great Valley Parkway, 244, 260. Great Valley Parkway is a park, parking lot and generator pad project by Johnson &amp; Johnson Innovative Medicine, as they're now going by. So preliminary slash final plan to build a new parking lot along the frontage of the building, some external walkways, some outdoor amenity space, some generator pads to help sustain their operations in times of grid instability and peak pricing and things like that. So in other words, basically a way for them to park their site better and also just have more sustained operations. Last month, the board authorized drafting resolution. We've since done that. There's a handful of projects, specific conditions, but mostly your, your usual procedural stuff about posting, financial security, recording the plan, et cetera. If there's any questions, I believe the applicant's legal counsel is here, otherwise resolution is in a position to be voted on.
I have no questions.
I have no questions unless you've got any ins on innovative medicine for chronic coughs solutions. Okay.
I have no questions.
No, I don't have any questions either. I think we're good with this one. Peter, you want to make a motion?
Sure, I'd love to make a motion to, Bernard, we're rendering a decision, I'm not authorizing anything. We're rendering, we're rendering a decision, not authorizing.
Yeah, you're rendering, yeah.
Render approval. That's what I was asking, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to render a decision of approval for the development application of LD-07-2024 for properties 244 and 260 on Great Valley Parkway for the Johnson &amp; Johnson Innovative Medicine preliminary final land development plan.
Second?
All in.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm locked out. All right.
Second item here is actually a request for a waiver of the land development review process for a project at 1400 Atwater. This is what we call the, the Endo Building. Endo has essentially vacated the building. Vanguard will be taking it over as part of their fit out of the building. They are looking to install security gates at the front at both the eastern and western entrances to the existing building, along some fairly minor improvements to the, the driveways themselves. I'll just zoom in real quickly so you can see. This is some limited widening here. It'll cooperate. Limited widening to accommodate the guard shack in the, sort of the new median. That note would stop popping up, I apologize. So basically widening the throat of the intersection to accommodate the new guard shack at this end and then at the eastern end, a similar structure, both, you know, sort of 72 square foot prefab structures. This one will have sort of a bypass lane, so a little bit more involved on the actual construction of the driveway, but again, a very limited project. There will be some, can zoom out here quickly, some exterior walkways to kind of connect these areas to the main entrance of the building. You can see this hatched area here. Given the limited scope of this, staff felt that it was appropriate to kind of simplify the review process. We did have our consultants look at it, both our, from a civil standpoint and a traffic engineering standpoint, just to ensure there wouldn't be any excessive queuing out on Atwater Drive and things like that. So they reviewed that. There's, there's been an exchange of review letters, any sort of like a normal review. We would ask, we would make a condition that they comply with any of those outstanding comments, of which there really aren't any at this point, after some ongoing discussions. So I believe the applicant's engineer and legal counsel are here if there's questions, but that's the project in a nutshell.
You know, we've seen this, I think, a couple of times, but it looks pretty clear. Rich, you got a question?
Yes, I have one question. This won't be a multi-tenant building. This will be exclusive Vanguard. Okay. Right, oh. We saw that transfer tax coming. All right, I'll make a motion to...
I'm going to cut you out one second. Well, I know I asked this before, I'm not sure you knew the answers. The Vanguard employees, are they coming from within East Whiteland Township or would they be coming from outside into this new building? Any idea as far as numbers? Not to put you on the spot, but roughly, roughly.
If you're an expert, can you come up with a rationale?
Roughly.
Thirty, 30%.
Okay.
Outside attachment.
All right. And the building is going to house how many employees?
Seventeen hundred seats.
I'm sorry?
Seventeen hundred seats.
Seventeen hundred seats, okay. Okay, thank you for that.
I'll make a motion to approve the waiver land development, 10-2024 for 1400 Atwater Drive, the gated access project for the Vanguard Group.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks for weighing in.
Keep our road. All right. So there's nothing before the board seeking authorization to draft a resolution. We have a couple of projects coming in the next month or so that the board will be reviewing. Third section here is just for extensions of time. The first is for project at 19 Backton Hill, currently under review. They'll be at the Planning Commission tomorrow night, which I just realized off the top of my head here, tomorrow night. And that'll probably be before you in February. Si Temple is a project on Plainbrook Road. We're still awaiting a resubmission on that plan, so they've extended it out through May. The workspace industrial building at 55 and 65 Valley Stream Parkway, we will be reviewing that tomorrow night as well, so they've extended it out through March. And for Bishop Tube, we do not have a resubmission. We haven't had a resubmission in some time. They are, as I understand it, coordinating with DEP on some settlement-related aspects with the cleanup. Those conversations are ongoing as we understand it, but we are not privy to those conversations. So we are just kind of perpetually extending out a few months until we have a little more clarity on what, how that process is intended to go.
Any questions from the public on any of those items?
Yes.
Sorry. Try to find my little hand every second.
Go ahead.
Okay, sorry, sorry. Barbara Arnold, 31 Fontstock Road. It, it looks in, in the agenda as if there is an extension to make, but it sounds like they have not actually applied for an extension. Is that correct?
Yeah, I guess semantics. We have a letter, a written authorization of extension from the applicant's legal counsel. So there's not anything you really file per se, but it just has to be a, a written offer of extension, which we've received from them.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to be sure. And of course, once again, I will encourage the board to vote no on this extension and you, you know, we've been through this before, so I appreciate your consideration on that. Thank you.
Karen Ralph, go ahead, please.
Yes, I, I too would like to encourage the board to vote no on an extension and on approving this development. So, you know, we just want to constantly be a reminder for you guys that we really want you to vote no on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah Mabel, go ahead, please.
Dita. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it on this end. That is it on this end.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to just briefly speak on this. And I, I think it's really important, as you heard, to listen to the people that are online, especially the people that live right there. I understand you sit in a tight spot in terms of how you handle these types of situations, and I am urging you to be more responsible and respectful of your constituency than the state government is. And I'm urging you to be the protector of, of their public health, of clean air, clean water, the constitutional obligations that we as elected officials at whatever level of government have taken an oath to. And unfortunately, this project has become, from my latest understanding, quite a demand by this developer going as high as the governor's office. I am not privy to those conversations, so I want to make that clear. This was brought to my attention by a well-meaning person within one of our state agencies that this was in fact the reality, that there was an expedited effort to push this project through. And I'm not aware of a remediation project with this level of contamination concern that can be expedited. There might be one in developer world, but in the scientific world, I've not ever read about a single one. So I know that the decision of the board is likely to, to grant an extension. I would hope that you would grant that extension with specific conditions that, that would be required to, to meet approval and/or of another extension. I'm not a politician who has judicial friends and connections to make realities happen for developers, so that is not the world that I live in. I only get to hear from concerned individuals that those things are happening. And I, and I think, you know, I don't expect you all to know this, but I'm telling you. And so I'm, I'm asking you to do better than people that are in higher offices that should be protecting the health and well-being. And unfortunately, prefer to expedite projects that could be very harmful. And I would be very vocal about allowing any type of development on a toxic wasteland and selling townhomes for $700,000, $900,000. I think that would be a moral failure of, of all levels of government to allow that to happen. So thank you.
Hi there. I just also wanted to comment on the Bishop Tube site. I'm Annika Van Rossum and I'm with Delaware Riverkeeper Network, and I want to thank Senator Muth for reminding you of your constitutional duty under Article 1, Section 27 of the Pennsylvania Constitution, of the people to have clean air, pure water, and of course, the protection of the natural resources for all people, not just constitution-driven partners, not just developers, not just Brian O'Neill. That park, if turned into green space and fully remediated, would be of huge benefit to this community psychologically, physically, emotionally. We know the benefits of clean, green space for people, and it's very clear that the developer has no intention of doing, of trying to, of, he is clearly trying to build while the site before remediate or during remediation. He does not want it fully cleaned up. He just wants to get his project done, and that's wrong. And you have full information from Delaware Riverkeeper Network and from your community members, giving you the tools and the information to outright reject the proposal. There's no need to continue to keep kicking this decision down the line. It really is time for you to just say no and help this process and stand up for your community and to not push the interests of developers. It's time to just say no and stop kicking it down the line. Thank you.
Ditto again. Let's also remind our supervisors and the other people that are part of the decision-making here. We live in this township. The builder does not. We're entitled to the benefits of the township. He is not. He bought that land fully understanding that it was a contaminated site, and this was going to be near impossible to clean up. And he knew that. And I'm sorry that he took a bad risk, because he didn't know who was living next door. But that's the way life is. I live in this township. My kids live in this township. My grandchildren live in this township. And obviously, so do you. So please stand up for us, not for them. And again, thank you, Senator Moos, and thank you, Delaware Riverkeeper Network.
Do you like to make a motion on the items?
One, do one at a time, I think is appropriate. First, I'll make a motion to extend the time for LD oh two twenty twenty for nineteen Bacton Hill Road, preliminary final till March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes.
Make a motion to extend the time for LD oh six twenty twenty-four for Si Temple preliminary plan until May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes.
Motion to approve an extension for LD oh nine twenty twenty-four for workspace industrial building at fifty-five and sixty-five Valley Stream Parkway, which are also empty office buildings, preliminary plan till March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes.
Motion to approve an extension for LD oh nine twenty twenty-four for workspace industrial building at fifty-five and sixty-five Valley Stream Parkway, which are also empty office buildings, preliminary plan till March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes.
Motion to approve an extension for LD oh nine twenty twenty-four for workspace industrial building at fifty-five and sixty-five Valley Stream Parkway, which are also empty office buildings, preliminary plan till March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And for Bishop Tube redevelopment, everyone's comments are welcome and are heard. As far as I'm concerned, there is no public official higher than this board, to me, that will have any influence on me. I think it is, that's all I can say. It will not happen to me. Okay? Any other comments before I?
I would, I would add that we're hearing the comments, and I will also say that, as Senator Moos said, we're hearing some things out there as well. And I'd like to see how this materializes. So this extension, I think, is, is not an issue from my standpoint in terms of moving forward or not moving forward. But there's something in the works, which hopefully we'll have a better understanding, certainly before the end of May this year.
Not that I'm aware of, but that's okay.
So, and then there may not come, may nothing come of it, but anyway. If you'd like to make the motion.
So, in conclusion, I think the, my belief is that denying an extension and forcing a decision poses a much greater risk to the residents than agreeing to the extension. Not granting the extension means the unknown. And the unknown means heading before judges, I think. And you never know what a judge is going to do. That's my opinion. So I would make a motion to approve, to accept the extension for the Bishop Tube redevelopment until May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Extension granted. John Mate, if you can update us on zoning?
Yes, for the month of January, we have no upcoming or pending applications before the zoning hearing board. On recent decisions from the zoning hearing board, we had two last month. The first was in response to the conditional use hearing earlier from about Penn Crest Properties at three seventy Lancaster Avenue. That application was granted by the zoning hearing board and approved. They approved a special exception with items of relief with conditions. And they had a second hearing last month that they made a decision on. It was number twenty-four, or twenty twenty-four oh seven. It was the application of William Davison, Chucktown LLC, three thirty-six Conestoga Road. They also granted the application and approved the request of variances from the, with conditions. Copies of those decisions were placed in your, in your packets. If you have any questions or, you know, want to make any decisions, if you want to appeal those or just let them lie as they are.
I made my thoughts last, known last meeting about not sending the solicitor. As I didn't want to approve the, as I did want to send it to the zoning hearing board for the Chucktown LLC, three thirty-six Conestoga Road development.
Decision has been rendered, so the issue before the board is whether to appeal. All right? Okay. So, it is a definite plus that the zoning hearing board restricted right, left turns out, right?
Correct.
Because only right, right turn out is permitted. That's right.
Correct.
So that means you can't go left. The only other risk movement is a left turn in. And I guess if they didn't feel it was, you know, worth putting that restriction to, then, you know, they heard the testimony. I don't know that it's worth appealing for that additional movement. I think appealing the use and the variances is a loser. You know, I just don't see the decision being overturned. So that's pretty much where I come out to, which is not to go to the effort of appealing.
I did want to revert back to Chief Yager, because he was in agreement. Basically, Peter and both, Peter and I were concerned about the right turn and the left turn out of there. And Chief, you've got some other thoughts, I can believe?
I just went and did a ten-year traffic. We went back ten years and looked to see how many accidents were in that little area. And over a ten-year period, I got rid of a lot of the things that were, couldn't quite write off as being in that. A lot of them were like deer strikes and things of that. But there was fifty-seven accidents in that area. And of those, I mean, an additional ten that involves exiting from either the high school or the veterinarian, either entering or exiting. So that's the statistical part of the equation to whether there was too many accidents or not enough accidents to deny it. But that's how it goes. So almost all the accidents that I had were like rear end collisions or some at the corner of Phoenixville Pike and four oh one. Like I said, only ten, which comes down to about one a year from those two locations, pulling out on the four oh one or pulling in.
Right, okay. I'm, I'm of the mindset to reverse my opinion of the last meeting. And Peter, if you want to make a motion, I'm going to join your side of defense regarding an appeal to the zoning hearing board.
I just, am I on? Okay, I just want to make sure you're aware, in the Davidson matter that you're going to motion to appeal, this is zoned NS Neighborhood School District. And so what is permitted there is obviously not a single-family residential, which is, but educational, culture, religious, civic uses, institutional residence or care or confinement facilities, that's conditional use. Permitted use is an assisted living facility. Public schools or private schools are permitted. Cemeteries are permitted. Pramatoriums are special exception. Not accessory, a tenant is a special exception. And continuing care retirement community is conditional use. So the permitted, conditional, and special exception uses that can go on that property are going to be a lot more traffic-intensive than a single-family residential. I just want to say that. So we could certainly appeal it, but that's my only concern.
For a motion to appeal, does the motion need to state the grounds? We believe it just, okay.
I could just, yeah, I could just appeal it, yeah. Eventually, I have to tell the court. These are the, yeah, these are the basis for the appeal. Yeah, I have to do that.
If it reaches that point, unless something, if there's a specific issue of concern, whether that can be compromised before court.
Yes, correct.
But that's up to the appellant's.
Yes.
Okay, got it.
So on the by right options that exist, which you describe as having obviously more potential traffic flow, I would think that there'd be substantially more restrictions on turns when there's going to be more volume of business, more traffic? Or am I incorrect in that assumption? Do you think? Maybe Zach, you can, or John? I don't know.
Keep in mind, this is a state road. It's a PennDOT road.
Yeah, I know. That's, 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 that's the bloated piece, state road.
If we even wanted to say no left turn in going, what is it, westbound, eastbound on four oh one, would we even have jurisdiction?
Well, the way Andy Round wrote this was that it would be a sign, it's on the property itself. It's not a PennDOT sign that says, and so if you wanted to put a sign on PennDOT that you couldn't turn left in there, he'd have to go ask PennDOT that. And I don't, I don't know how PennDOT would review that for a single-family home, saying, putting up a sign on a PennDOT road for...
I don't know where you'd put it. There's no median right there, right? It's just double yellow line. So I don't know. I'm no traffic engineer, but, okay, all right.
You said we've got sixty days or ninety days?
You have thirty days from, this was written on January tenth, so thirty days from January tenth, which means we have to do it before the February meeting, which is on the twelfth. So I would need to know tonight. The way to file an appeal, it's very simple. It's just a notice of appeal. I don't have to explain why or anything at that point. I'm just filing a notice of appeal. Yeah, I may have to put something in it. Yeah, I gotta put something in it, but I can do that.
All right, then. I'd like to make a motion to appeal the development proposed by William Davison slash Chucktown LLC, the equitable owner of the property to be developed at three thirty-six Conestoga Road.
I guess we would be appealing the zoning hearing board, correct?
Yes, so you're appealing this zoning hearing board decision, and the way that works is technically Andy has to defend it, but they usually, the way most zoning hearing boards usually, they usually leave it to the applicant to do it.
Well, I'll second that motion. Peter, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Dissent?
Yeah, I would dissent.
It passes two to one. John, anymore? You've got some, probably, I'm sure you've got a few property updates?
Well, I'll just, I'll just keep it short. For some code enforcement information, in early twenty twenty-four, the township sent out rental occupancy registration forms with the help of our township tax collector. With that, we receive, we receive registrations of over two hundred single-family dwellings and fifty commercial and multifamily dwellings that are operating as rental units throughout the township. We remind the property owners in East Whiteland Township, the chapter one forty-five of the Township Code requires you to register these properties that you own, that you own and are leased or rented to other parties. Also, you're required to update any changes on the information provided on these forms within thirty days. Although there's no charge for this registration, if you're found to be noncompliant, fines can be levied, if found guilty in court, for up to five hundred dollars per offense. Rental occupancy registration forms can be found easily on our township website under EWT rental occupancy, under our documents section.
All right, thank you. Donna, do we have any public comments?
Go ahead, Deb.
Go ahead, Debbie.
I actually have a question. I seem to remember when that big ugly sign was put at the end of twenty-nine, okay? And it's still a big ugly sign. And twenty-nine and thirty, with all that controversy, and they talked about, behind it, there was an access road that couldn't be torn up, that was being repaved and parking was added. Because I remember asking, for who? And someone said for those buildings back there, which nobody works in, or they have a limited number of work. And at any rate, the parking for the buildings on the south side of Route thirty in that area has always been sufficient. But now there's evidently more parking there. All of the sudden, I have noticed, and someone else brought it to my attention, is there's a ton of cars back there. And my question is, are they really for people who work there, or is the dealership who's been trying to use the Friendly's parking lot, taking the cars across the street and hiding them behind the trees? And if so, is that legal? Because after all, that's not zoned a car dealership back there. So if our zoning guy could check into that, and you know what, I haven't checked for a few days because it's too cold to go out of the house. So there may be nothing down there right now. But when someone brought it to my attention, I looked, and there was a whole bunch of cars parked back there. And I had no idea why.
Yep, we, we're heavy on that one. John's got some information for you.
Yeah, the property there appeared a year and a half ago before the zoning hearing board and asked to use what was, they owned a plot of ground that was the abandoned old Lincoln Highway, Lancaster Avenue, for parking. The zoning hearing board approved it with conditions. So it basically is a permitted parking area. They limited to the number of parking spaces and uses and what could be stored there. And the landlord, who actually owns the property, owns the adjacent grounds at seventy and seventy-two. And the landlord, who actually owns the property, owns the adjacent grounds at 70 and 72 Lancaster Avenue to Salamo Family. And they're pretty restrictive on what they do there. It is a car dealership that has their vehicles stored there in a secured area, and it's permitted use in the, underneath the zoning code and the approvals that were given by the zoning hearing board.
Because that was never raised when the issue came up at the meeting. We were, we were never told that we were going to be able to store more use, because that's been a complaint. And I know I complained about nothing, but other people have come to the board and complained that how many car dealerships are we going to squeeze in along Route 30? You're trying to beautify it, and we're like letting them spread out all over the place. And if, if, if we couldn't, if we, if we couldn't pave that road because it's some kind of historical road, but we can make it into a parking lot? That doesn't make sense to me. Thank you.
Anything else out there? All right, here we go. You ready? Consent agenda, I'll read. Wish me luck. Stop me if you have any questions. Actually, don't stop me. Consent agenda, approve the meeting minutes from December 11, 2024, and the January 6, 2025 reorg meeting. Ratify the payment of bills of $1,923,055.91. Approve the treasury report. Approve the annual contract for Delta Development Group in the amount of $5,000. Consider proposal for engineering services supplement number two from Bowman Consulting for Moore's Road sidewalk project in the amount of $36,000. Ratify and approve to be sent at the discretion of the township manager, the 180-day notice of termination for the May 2020-15 operating agreement with the Volunteer Fire Association. Ratify and approve John Deere and Company mower and boom attachment CoStar approval in the amount of $77,805.68 and $93,316.26 for the Atlantic Tractor LLC slash Alamo. Ratify and approve purchase of the 2024 dump truck in the amount of $119,189. Authorize natural lands proposal to assist open space task one through three not to exceed $12,000 without prior approval. So, Catherine, that was re-discussed and ratified by the staff?
Yeah.
Okay. Ratify and approve all covered service replacement project, the all-covered server replacement project, network switch licensing and labor for the township in the amount of $28,221, which is in the 2024 budget. Approve the purchase of 10 new boardroom chairs from my office connection in the amount of $2,843.40. And finally, approve the replacement of carpet in Lieutenant Lopez's office not to exceed $1,900 from leaf flooring. And Donna, you have a comment?
I do have a comment. For number nine D, you said 50, you said 5,000, and it's 5,500.
I'm sorry, what number?
Nine D, it was for the Delta Development Group. You stated 5,000, and it's 5,500.
All right.
That's all. So, just a correction there.
Any other comments? Peter, would you like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve the, the January 2025 consent agenda as read.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Line 15.